Okay, it's 6:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order. 6:30, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I seek approval of the agenda. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Brian, did we get the public comment? No public comment. Okay, we have an action item, approval of the abstract of the election. So I think you all have a copy at your table. It's the summary of the results from the election. Any questions, comments? I don't know who ever had to do this before. Every year.
Every election. Remove approval of the abstract presented tonight of the previous.
Motion in the second, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 5.1, recognition of the outgoing meeting.
Yes, I would like to recognize our board president. For eight years on the school board, and on behalf of that as our board president, and on behalf of the entire district, say thank you. And you would both clap and your paper.
Thanks to all of you. I said my surprise last meeting. So just, thanks, thanks for being an awesome board. Thanks to Mark Flora and Dave, who I've also served with in my eight years. I hope that I did a little bit of good to this district, and I know that all of you and our new members will continue doing good next to students. That's what we're here for, is for students. Thanks, Flora. Um, okay, I need a motion for adjournment. I've heard a motion, yeah. In a second.
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I hand it over to Brian.
Back to SIS.
I'm here.
Okay, we'll call the order for the new board organizational meeting. Item 7.2 is what we'll call. Say it. 7.3, the old office. AC. The solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the states and the Constitution of the state of mind, that you will faithfully and impartially to the best of your will, discharge the duties of the office of Director of the Board, and the duties of the district as now. Item 7.4 is election of the President or President. No nominations.
I nominate Marty Giddy as President of the Board.
I second that nomination.
Marty, who the Board, concern the other nominations. Hearing that, take a vote for election if Marty Giddy is President. Those in favor, say goodbye, I say aye.
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 Marty Giddy is the Vice President. Thank you so much, man, for there. So why don't we get started? Yes, John, move and say engage. 7.2, we need a. Oh, okay. 7.3. Would entertain any nominations for Vice President? I'm counting Tom Meyer to Vice President.
Second.
Motion in the second for Tom Meyer to be our Vice President. Any discussion? Any alternate? Hearing that, all in favor for Tom Meyer to be Vice President of this Board? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion sent on. 7.6, operating practices. Basically, it's housekeeping for what the Board expected of the Board President, Brian, Stu, regards to business, state of business, path of the Board in its absence. We'll move to the appointment committees here a little bit, so. Just need approval, I would ask for 7.6A.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? B, 7.6B, appointment of Board members to committees.
Did you have a chance to look at these board assignments? Any questions about any? If you'd like to, for your habit. 7.6, do you want to follow up, please?
I did list those a page to the packet, the previous committee appointments.
Do you guys want to provide me with the whole summary of delegate assembly and meeting process operations?
Sure, the delegate assembly is really a once a year. It's the day, the first day of the School Board Association. Tori has done that. We've had a Board members do it in their absence. There have been some years that we haven't been able to participate in delegate assembly. That is on the School Board Association Convention. Legislative liaison, there hasn't been a lot there. Occasionally we'll have contact with myself and directly up those skills. And the interest-based IBC group, that's our collective bargaining group with our teachers.
Let me set it, don't know if you have any idea of something you might see interesting. Yeah. Figure we'd like you to have a first pick.
That's from the address that we had in the source that we're at by three four. I think he would really enjoy that. I still tend to.
Yeah.
What you said. NCRC.
And then I would do city school.
This is important. City school typically out there. We haven't had one as late since the gates, because we've been working through addition 2040, yes. But we should be wrapping that up Thursday afternoon, so I would anticipate a city school. Probably in the next month or two. So I don't actually want to say on the calendar.
That's my. We have a close city school that I can see there.
Okay, that's. I'm okay with what I got. It's, I think, one of the resources that I'm already on it, which is a citizen community. I'm rostered here with the all, but I also, I was on it. I've been since like 2010.
So Marty, do you want to take the delegate assembly as well, since you're all into that or you don't?
I would do it just with the notice to you guys that making it will be a hardship.
Right.
I guess, but I would take responsibility saying, okay, who's going to go first? I will.
That's, I guess.
Yeah. While we're there.
Yeah.
Who's going to win?
Sorry about me. Who wants the back step? It's one a year, so with that, you have to be there on Wednesday, right?
It's the Wednesday, and we've had years where we haven't, right? Like, yes, it's on the Wednesday.
I'm sure about this year, but.
So I have a delegate assembly. Marty with Tom as an alternate, legislated by his own Marty. Story County Conference Board Joe, IBC, Tom and. NCRC with the MC. School Board, excuse me, SiAC, Marty. And City School, we have Tom.
Include the Ames Conference Board, too.
Yeah, there's also the Ames Conference.
Thank you.
That's actually got some even there this year.
That's been a busy one.
It's been a busy one this year, usually it's a sleeper, not this.
I'll make sure I have that, thank you.
I know a couple of times I've had to go, I'll be back in a while.
Yep. Thank you, everybody, for stepping up. School District happens in other forums, and your presence is best. That brings us, we're all good, everybody's got a clear idea. Make sure that works, I'll be picking you up here, give it to us in short memo. 8.1, our whole school update, messes construction, so we wind that down.
Evening.
Evening.
So. I know I said this, we are still, we're coming down that final home stretch. This week, we're going to be punching out the admin areas and comments areas in the middle school, and, you know, ready with that final punch list to start moving back in. We are still on track for moving up storefront stores that we talked about to start in 20 seconds, and that will continue, some of it can go during the school year, some of it's going to have to be on all hours, so we will continue through Christmas break, because we will do a chunk of that at Christmas break when the school is occupied. We are also still looking at some extra work in the kitchen. We're going to talk about that when I talk about change orders and in the wrestling room. We'll talk about that with change orders. And then in general, we're getting cleaned up around the job site, marking lots. I touched on it before, I know some of you heard it in the news. We are still having issue manpower with contractors. One of the things that we are going to look at, I think this all wrapped up, is if we have to start supplementing, bringing supplementary workforces for these last few items to close this out if we're having, kind of trouble with current contracts on site. I would like to talk briefly about, there are two change orders on the agenda or on the consent agenda tonight. They're divided up into five different contracts, two main change orders. The first change order is labeled as ASI 35, and that is to, I've talked about it, rooted to it, I think, in the last meeting, in the kitchen, at the dish machine, the dishwasher, the drywall behind that dishwasher is pre-ragged after 30 years of operation. So we want to take the dish machine and the three department pot safe, disconnect those, pull them off the wall, wipe the wall, strip the drywall off, make sure we don't have any moisture-related issues behind the wall, and then reinstall drywall, fiberglass reinforced panel, install that dish machine, that pot wash. You will note on your change order summary that there is, so that would include the bottom, uncooking the electrical, would include crunk, unlooking, the plumbing, and HVAC. There's also a line item on there for testers to do some work. This is one of those supplementary things we're talking about. We're having trouble getting some cost on other contractors. Try to step up and say this is what it would take for us to do it, so we can bring our own crews in and complete that drywall work and get it done, taken care of. The other change order is in the wrestling room. What we want to do there is raise the ductwork out of the way and raise the lights, so that the roof can be used as more multi-purpose roof and not just a wrestling room. In other words, gets those lights high enough so that if they're in there, play dodgeball, if they still play dodgeball or any other kind of sport like that, it's not going to hit the lights if they're on hot iron. So that is the, that's the one that's like ASI 37 on the change orders. Any questions, or if any say, I'll kind of stop. Make that for you for them.
So. This wrestling room duct and light changes has a grand total of $0 cost in district.
So, yeah, I mean, let me, so what we're doing there is all of those items, as I've talked before, they, we have the construction allowance built into each contract, so those would be applied to that allowance for mechanical contractor crunk and the electrical contractor bottom. The drywall work that Estus would do, we don't have an allowance built into our contract, so that becomes an addition, comes out of the other contingency line up.
Off the top of your head, you know where we are, I know it's coming to the end, contingency dollars, you know, that figure. As of tonight, taking into account what you just said.
Taking into account, if we, from the last spreadsheet that I did, if we were to spend, so we have some changes that have been out there from contractors, clients, and such that we're working through. If we have to pay all of that, unfortunately, we're not going to. And even if we did, we would still have about $50,000 to do on the product, of all the contingencies. That makes sense.
Now, as we get to the wrap-up on that, that number is going to be a real concern to me, see what dollars are left out.
Right.
We consume, what, 3%? We have 3% contingency on this?
Correct.
And we virtually consumed that to get to this conversation. Be wanting to hear at your next present to us what that number is.
Right.
As the dollars remaining that. So.
Right.
Thank you. Anybody have a question?
Yeah, my question regarding the kitchen change order. You had mentioned that, you know, pull the drywall off and then check to see if there's any other potential water damage, assuming that could be like to the wall structure, the studs, or things like that.
Rust on the stirs.
Anticipating that being an issue, or?
Well, we would look for rust on the stirs, any problems with piping, kind of all piping.
But did you find that you would replace those problematic areas?
That would be, that would be. So this could grow.
Anybody else?
Maybe, I don't think I missed this, but when will we be fully moved back into the, into the kitchen? And when will we be wrestling, wrestling room?
So we want the wrestling room that has everything stored here right now, that will start moving out into the admin space and the columns, and we just got painted ceiling, and that will be ready in weeks.
So where are we at?
Two weeks. Six weeks.
I would like to, what I would say right now is that all punched out, and then we have, I'll say it, first part of December there.
Where are the wrestlers at right now, are they in the training center or where are they practicing?
Yeah, they're, they're back in the safety.
Because we're going to start to improve the change order for the lights, raise the lights, we'll start that right away.
So are we in a substantial completion phase with this?
Some parts are, these last couple, that's what we're getting to this week.
A lot before we get to do a punch list block there.
That's what we're looking at doing this week on Thursday.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate it, thank you for, you know, some of these questions are kind of out of the blue, but as we come to the end, it'd just be nice to know where we are on a standing basis in regards to the dollars.
No, there's nothing out of the blue, and that's exactly what I'm trying to say, the same thing we would expect to do.
Thank you for your time today.
Around, if there's any other questions off the consent agenda.
Right. Brings us to our action agenda, 9.1, Brian Williams, SBRC.
School budget, you need.
You have an application for allowable growth in two components there, would you like to explain that, take a plate, please?
Yeah, there's two, there's possibility of three things that you can do. It's time of year to raise the allowable growth of the school district. We're going to take advantage of two of them based on our enrollment count. The one is open enrollment out number. Basically, it's the count of the overall out that we're rostered on this thing from last year. With that one. Increase, increase in the law of approach to. 200,000 or 208,620. And there's also one for limited English proficient students that are top beyond five years. That one's 24,28272. Basically, what that does is it increases the allowable growth of the school district. Basically, it's like adding on, onto your person, onto the possible spending on the person's credit card.
These dollars then are placed in the general?
Yes, in the general budget.
So the offset for the student dollars on the plan are partially offset here, correct?
Yes. Not completely, but not completely.
Anybody have any questions, Brian? Did a pretty good job, I think, explaining where we are, it's pretty straightforward. I was struck when I was looking at the board back at you Friday. I don't remember, and that doesn't mean anything, but I don't have ever, ever any dollars for ELL students in this respect, has that been the case in times past, years ago? Occasionally, it's not every year, it's not. That's maybe why it didn't catch my attention, though. Full board? It seems like a slam dunk. So. Guess I would ask you guys, any thoughts amongst yourselves? And that is the modified allowable growth, not necessarily these taxes or spending, just out there.
Have approval of the modified allowable growth for open enrollment and ELL, that's presented in 9.1.
Motion in the second to approve the allowable growth, modified allowable growth proposal as presented tonight, any further questions, comments? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. 9.1A. Going out, not prior to your count.
That was, that was okay.
9.2, generation. No, this is a big, since you look at this all.
No, it's okay, the special board meeting, 9.2, I'm actually going to ask the board to consider table 9.2. What? We were awaiting the guidance and policy from the School Board Association on this topic of the OSHA mandate, employers with 100 or more employees, the vaccination requirements. Work packet went out on the day of Friday. I was expecting to get that policy. Sometime this week, we got it actually late Friday afternoon with the guidance from the School Board Association. I intended to send that out to you all today, and we got further notice from the School Board Association this morning to hold off on this. There is a lottery of federal judges that are being selected to hear the lawsuit that 26 states filed to stop this exposure requirement. twenty-six states filed to stop this OSHA requirement. We may know the outcome of that by the end of this week. If they put a stay on the OSHA requirement, we will not need this meeting or this policy. If they don't, then we will need the required policy. And I would likely try to move that up even before November twenty-ninth because we would have to have a number of things in place by December sixth. And that would require us to get information from all of our employees, whether that be proof of vaccination, whether that be, uh, neighbor exemption and those kinds of things. So, uh, asking that we maybe table this until we know for sure it's necessary and then if it is, find a date that, you know, for the, and I will send the, the model policy as well as the FAQ, guidance out to all of you tomorrow to review, uh, in the event that we would need a special in the near future.
Can I ask a question? Just a, a question about the proposals and regulations. So the reading, uh, it's saying that, uh, if, as an employer, if you have an employee who is not vaccinated, they would have to go through, do need testing.
Correct, so, yeah.
At the cost of the employer. Clear about that?
That, um, to my understanding, would be the responsibility of the employee.
Okay.
To provide that testing. If the OSHA regulation goes through, it's my understanding that beginning December sixth, anyone without the vaccine or the waiver, would need to begin masking at work. Uh, if that's still the case, then I can, early January, that is the date that they would need to begin providing weekly tests, negative tests, yeah.
So who's going to say it comes to that as we just described it?
That's a good question, but those are things that, as I said, there was that much information to collect. We, we will, we will put a plan in place with as few people as possible to accomplish that. That's the recommendation of the guidance so far is that we collect that information, um, involving, uh, but involving as few people as possible.
Of course, we can, that's reading in regards to, uh, we should, I guess it's a fifth year old organization that President Nixon brought in. Ten of these have been issued, aggregated for fifty years. Six of them have challenged the court, one of them stood or challenged. I wasn't personally at that far down in all these exhibits. So it's not something that's done at all historically, but it varies since then. That's the track record design. I guess we'll see, we're watching a national, something of historic importance play itself out in very near term. What else, kind of thoughts?
I'm interested that if it gets that far, but the, but the cost group would be on employee that needed to make the test. What would it might be? The school district chose to, to throw that cost?
Yeah, I think if it goes that far, once we would know, uh, how many, we're used, how many were potentially going that route, that we could probably calculate, we could calculate that cost, yeah.
I guess I would get the overlay of the government's, or the governor's pronouncement where an employee that chooses not to get vaccination, and loses, uh, it's, misses their job, lack of better legal term, is eligible for, employment that was. My question, anybody, and when you bring your answers back to the board, does that apply to us if somebody say fired?
Yes, it does. Based on the guidance that I will provide tomorrow, that's my understanding.
Easy.
Is there any sort of, uh, timeframe in terms of when someone has gotten vaccinated, some of the boosters and such, or are they just kind of fully vaccinated and they've gotten them at any point?
I believe it's two weeks after your second vaccination that you're considered fully vaccinated.
But even if they were fully vaccinated a year ago, that was that sign, even though they're recommending boosters?
I believe so. I, I don't want to answer that a hundred percent, but I, I believe that that's true.
Any remarks? Well, uh, Dr. Gray's asked us to table this one, so just say that it's going to bring back information to the board. I would tell you to keep your calendars available. It would be nice to have everybody have hands on board. This is one of the bigger things that people go with their district on board, so. That's your email. Brings us, no further comments or consent agenda. We're in line with the district, that's our basic, our bills. Joe does a good job of, uh, asking questions on them. We have a mutual old banker friend at the beta that I came up for the, so base that always read those, ask questions and keep administration of the toes. You have to, or. Everything that we get, you see, it's kind of catch all, you have ability as a board member, if you want to talk about something, we can draw it out, say that's now part of the meeting. Or we can just do a general, uh, break through. If it's there, you have the ability to stop the train and things, have that conversation so that you're clear to your understanding for, as I can. I assume you're applying this around ten point three, Doctor, hiring additional special education associate because we've got all three. They're here. I did not receive any recommendations, uh, today. I know they had a couple of them scheduled and we intend that those were favorable and worked out, you know, I would have thought, but I didn't. First of mine. Bill there? So if that's just that one position, aren't you saying both of these are kind of moved right now? Well, she's trying to build both. We have the one due to resignation, the number one board reading. And the second one is due to, uh, student with significant special needs that just entered our district. You're asking for both positions.
I will, when I, when we get a candidate, I thought we might have the candidates for you tonight and apparently we don't.
So it's a good question. Remind me what happens if we can't find this?
Right now, we're, we're shuffling some folks around to make sure we're going to do that. And we have, uh, some people who double out at some cases, so, yeah, where, who, who want to get that bill sent here.
Anybody else see anything in there, Bill's wives? I see we got another fund rate there. Their first early graduation request. Always a good read, easy, when you see those, read through, there's stories that will land you in your heart. That's, yeah, it's good to see districts that have to move farther faster and leave us, yeah, telling them. And you never see anything there, just haven't seen anything at the, at your school. Any questions on, usually something to say, I'll say it again tonight. On the concept agenda. Get ready for the conference. Well, easy, I would tell you, just for the gravity of the meeting, I would say this is something you can look back at and, uh, just get yourself on. That's approval of the consent agenda is this place to hear that. Second. We have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda as, as Ian heard, I'll do this tonight. Any further discussion, questions? Uh, now, favor.
Aye. Aye.
We'll do it. It's going to consent agenda passes. Eleven point one, we're going to have the comments to turn.
So we finished our first term of school because it's already been November, no clue how. Uh, and now winter sports are starting up, so we had girls' basketball start, girls', uh, winter sports start last week and then boys' this week. And I know rest starts, uh, to be, of course, starts next week. But, um, I know girl's best, girls' basketball actually plays tonight, um, and I don't think it's an actual game, I don't remember. Um, but they're playing tonight, so wish them luck for the first, uh, match in the whole game. And hopefully, um, it goes well. We have a great winter season, uh, as our fall season was because, been doing great this year, like I said previously, and hopefully the data continues our, uh, good luck streak and win streak, so. But I think students are going to be excited for Thanksgiving break since we haven't had a day off yet, um, because of the school year, um, and our schedule, so I think students are going to be glad to have finally the first day off. Otherwise, it's just going above.
I hear it. We'll see, oh, I guess here's, this is good. How was the play we had, I broke it up in football game, I see tennis there, did that, going Thursday or anything?
It was really good. Um, I know it was a little weird with the, uh, football game of that Friday, um, but we still had high attendance on our Thursday performance, you know, that was, uh, like turnaround to that then, but, it went well and it was a great success for John, but we had actually a lot of tickets sold compared to like last year, so, uh, it's great to know.
Good. A great venue to use it, or a great venue to do it. I'd like to see people take advantage of it. Anybody else, easy, you got anything to tell the committee?
Here, it's a little bit of a learning curve, how things function in arguments, but, um, advocate until this day, so.
Congratulations to the football team, thank you for putting me up here. Be interesting, school year, you're going for a, well, challenge for, any meeting to contribute. People want to hear your voices and want to hear your thoughts, so, I'm going to engage and, see if we'll get there with that, some bright people, I mean, sorry, gave you some of the names you serve with, you serve all those, you know. Sometimes it was a verbal sprung where my D S team went from the door table and the very best was left and we cleared the, half map of license decisions and some good choices, so. Encourage us to do no less. Eleven point two, board calendar. About earlier, we might have a impromptu meeting and I strongly encourage you, as in tonight, to make yourself available. That should come up, it will be hard reaching.
On that matter, if at all possible, if you happen to have one, um, we can avoid too many warnings at present.
Okay, yeah, and if that's the only item and if it's, it is a, if we have to have it, it's a required policy, so I would anticipate that it would be a very short meeting, but I will throw off various times. I know we have done those, those one topic. As I say, there were all dirty, not a time. So once we know that, I'll throw out some options, so to make sure.
I don't want to leave this meeting without saying, thank you, Dave, for showing the even rotary through this building here two weeks ago, very well attended, I think we had ten, eleven. So the more that we can get people in here and show them what we have done on a property acquisition and, uh, refurbishment to the school needs, I think that helps us in standing in the community for our credibility and, uh, I think we did a good job, frankly, I'm pretty impressed with the assembly. That's it, that was a good meeting, folks. It's good to be back, got a new team, see what we can do. Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tonight, everybody, thank you. Oh, trust me, I'm in charge of that, we're, we're, we're happy. Just ask.
Awesome.
There's another question.
Yeah, yeah.
What was your question?